Actually, do we have, do we have a choice?
We have a really tight schedule, guys.
All right.
We're running people through here on a five-a-day basis.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, Pam, thank you for.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank y'all. If you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. You had that schedule in front of you because I don't.
I'm trying to pull it up right now.
You have the schedule, today's schedule.
Oh, yes, sir.
I sure do. Iris Coward already read it.
Iris is next.
Iris, please step forward. You didn't win anything, but step forward.
Page number.
Page number.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, yes.
Three or six? Six.
So it's ninety-three on here.
Well, that's the very, very front page. Ninety-six is the actual.
Ninety-six is the one we need?
Yes, sir.
Well, she's always asking for a whole lot, so I need to get there.
No.
I'm just kidding. And your yard is looking really nice.
Sure.
Your yard is looking really nice in front of the library.
Thank you, thank you. We're spending that thirty thousand down.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Well, basically, everything is still the same. I haven't asked for anything else other than a little bit more for books because we are, I'm looking at doing more online eBooks, which costs more unfortunately.
Yeah.
Than just buying the hardback books. But other than that, that's basically it.
Well, you come dangerously close to going over three and a half percent. You know, we're having to live with what the legislature passes. So you're, and when we stop and think about it, how much is that extra payday this year going to impact our budget? Close to three percent?
Um, we have that total. I don't have it right here where I can get it. But it could be, probably gonna be.
Yep.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it would be the, it would be the percentage of three or four percent of whatever the total.
Total.
Labor content is of our budget. Couldn't have come along at a bad time. So I guess that means we won't have to give pay raises this year.
Oh, boy.
Use, there's mine.
Okay.
So if y'all have any questions.
No, ma'am, I don't have any.
Yeah. And the reason I don't ask for very much is because I do go out for grants and things like that.
You're a good administrator.
And she takes all our scrap paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What page?
Renee is.
Renee?
Is page thirty-three. One of these days, we need to get this.
What page?
Thirty-three.
Do you have one of those sheets printed out?
Um, you know, I don't think we did print that one out.
You talking about this?
No.
The schedule?
It's not even there.
How about the schedule? You have another extra schedule?
Yes.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, because it's got the page numbers on it. That would help everybody on the court if we all had one, I mean. This is kind of small for me to read.
Renee's thirty-three and fifty-three.
Right.
Uh, yes. Parks.
Okay.
So in that one, that, that twenty thousand variance, that's all one pay period? That doesn't make sense. There gotta be some other stuff in that.
In Renee's?
Mm-hmm.
No, so that is one pay period.
How many employees do you have in there?
Well, if that was one pay period, it would be like, if you take twenty-six times the twenty, that's over half a million dollars. So there's gotta be something else in that.
You have twelve employees?
If we passed, if we gave step increases this year and we did some of those things, they will carry over into next year. So some of that's got to be. If we, if we, if we approved a new employee that came on board this year.
Yes.
It'll also impact.
Yes, that will impact.
So not all of that twenty thousand is two-one pay period? Could be.
It is with the inclusion of the new, if there was a new employee.
Right.
Was, then it, there is, if it was someone who was authorized this year, that wasn't in our last year's budget plan, then yes, that's going to affect it. It was someone, I don't remember, oh, I don't know that she did. Did you, you didn't get anybody in, in the middle, in.
Well.
Twenty-twenty that wasn't in the budget.
And as much as your group hospital insurance is staying the same, I guess we haven't got that factored in yet?
No.
So we, we didn't have any increase in the number of.
Right.
Employees. So it had to be step increases or whatever.
Yeah.
That's all the questions I have.
About fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
I would tell you the city of Rockport asked for more than thirty thousand. But visiting with the judge, we put thirty thousand. But they will be here. They are on the schedule, believe tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow morning. Because everything will be in the morning.
All right. All right. All right, Parks. I don't have any questions on that. Anybody have any questions for Renee?
No.
Renee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Damn, county clerk's got five different pages we go.
Sanitizer and things like that.
What's that? I didn't get that.
I said, has, has it been, got easier to get some of the things that you're.
We're still, we've had some donations from the state and as far as our vendors and stuff, we're just getting it where we can. And it's like everybody else, you, you're getting that off-market, the, the distilleries and stuff are.
Yeah.
Are supplying.
Do we have storage for more, for that supplies that we got?
Do we have storage?
For another pallet of each?
We can make it work.
See if you can get another pallet of each.
She's supposed to call me this week and let me know. Okay.
All right, that's it, thank you. Valerie, you're in the hot seat. You got a mic? That means you gotta get up.
Page is down, right?
Uh, sixteen is the first one.
Oh. Valerie, I had one question and it really goes to everything. On your maintenance agreements, are we still doing that the same way we did last year, Colin, on all the maintenance agreements?
Oh, it's not.
Oh, he's not? Are we still doing that same way we have done in the past? It looks like we are, where we're splitting it out according to the department.
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay.
He gives me a list of who needs which ones and we're putting those in their department.
Okay. And my second question was, has the phone gone down that much? Twenty-three hundred dollar?
Um, I was just looking at the years previous. We hadn't been spending that much, so.
Yeah, I, we're still trying to get it adjusted to which ones are, which department has phones business by the number of phones.
Okay.
And we have done a lot better job at getting, and Colin has been on phone company and we're getting everything cleaned up on that.
Okay, does it look like we're projected for forty-seven hundred dollars? It looks like we want to, we're looking at twenty-four hundred, that's twenty-three hundred dollar difference.
Is it more question? I was allocated across departments.
Yeah, I think that's the question.
They are by department.
But with the changes that we made in the last couple of years, has a phone bill gone down?
Total phone bill?
Total, probably not. It may be, it's just in the allocations.
But the per phone, that's gone down?
No.
No?
I wasn't the one that put the forty-seven, though, was it you?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Okay.
That forty-seven was just the projection and a lot of those, because it was so early when I did the spreadsheets, I projected to spend what we budgeted. I'll go in and clean those up before we do the next workshops and make sure that we have a look at better number.
Okay, and then the usual question is the, is the increase in, in the first category mostly just the pay period?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What's your other one?
Okay, there we go, page eighty-three.
The detail is on page eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yes.
So we've got an archive fund balance of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You got any plans to use some of that?
Uh, I was wanting to use it for, you can only use it for certain things. You can only use it for records before nineteen fifty-one. I had sent an email to Will Whittington because I thought that he was working on a, trying to get funds from the government for doing those old records.
For what?
For doing those old records, like.
Indexing.
Having them indexed.
Digital, digitizing.
It's, well, most of them are digitized, but some of the stuff, especially the ones that were on microfilm, they're real bad. And I was talking with Co-File and she said that they could clean a lot of those up. And she's the only one that I've spoken to about it.
But you could use your money to clean it, get that done.
I think so. She acted like we could.
Is this where, Jackie, where you would charge the storage fees?
No, sir, I don't believe so. This is not where this would be used. There, there are some other departments that they have.
Which one, which one would be? You know, our hand.
I thought y'all were using all my records management for.
Most of your recommendations for Gail.
Yeah.
Um.
Contingency fund?
I think there's another one that we possibly can, Charlie. I'd have to double check and look on the use of it, but she has several.
Well, you've got a county clerk, district clerk, contingency fund account.
I'm not sure what the use on that is. We can double check on that one and see if that one's available. They are regulated by statute what they can be used for and.
We, we just need to be using as many of them as we can if they're.
What about, what about the records management and preservation fund?
That, we have an employee that is paid out of that fund, Gail Otto. And that pretty much takes care of that fund.
So you don't know if we, right now, you can't say where the.
I, I can't say that we can use the contingency. I'd have to check and see what the statutes are on the use of it. But we will certainly check.
We'll find a home for that twenty thousand, two thousand dollars a month.
We will find a home for it.
Good.
Valerie, you said that fund, it's only for records that are prior to.
Nineteen fifty-one.
That's it, that's at five-nine-nine or?
The indexing.
Four-three, five-nine-nine?
Yes.
For fifty thousand.
Jackie, while you're looking for that, if, if in fact you come up with some requirements or some restrictions on some of those funds that don't make sense, that might be a legislative issue that we can attack.
Yep.
Because it's kind of ridiculous that we've got funds sitting there and we don't have access to.
Right.
Because of some quote mundane legislature.
Well, the funds are not for the county, they're for the clerk's records, though.
I'm talking about for records. If, if in fact you're having to store records and we've got all these funds and none of them let you use those monies to pay storage on it. It seems to me that we need to change, go to the legislature and get some of those quote laws changed.
Get some of them authorized.
And a lot of those records are the older ones.
Yeah. Okay, page one hundred.
That's the contingency fund that we were talking about.
Yeah, this. And page one oh-three.
Special contingency fund.
Yes. This is the records management. Now, this is the one that does include Gail's salary. And that's, um, basically what's in that is, is Gail's salary. One employee. There is some fund balance in there. That may be where we can put the storage and, and use some of the fund balance instead of it just continuing to sit there. I mean, it's just a thought.
How much of that money?
Um, it looks like you've got about ninety thousand dollars. Right at ninety.
I want to say when I was reading that, that it's only for indexing property records. We can read that one again.
We'll have to look at it and see and make sure.
I don't think it would ever.
Nope, I have none.
No more questions. Thank you, ma'am. I thought we were gonna drill you, but didn't happen.
Well, I would make the comment that she was over four percent on increases. You'll have to do better under the three and a half percent. Of course, that's gonna be a common theme all day long.
All right, yes, Judge Duipnix next.
Since she's not here, Judge, you wanna go on and make your, your report?
Well, yeah, I saw that and I said, whoa, I didn't, I didn't do it.
I thought you passed it on to John. I thought John was gonna do it.
He passed it on to you. Jackie said, page.
One eighteen.
One eighteen.
Yeah.
Had to stop and think about what fund though.
Who do I address my questions to here?
Jackie'd be good.
I guess you can address it to me.
The, the revenues that you're showing there on page one eighteen, those are projected revenues based on what?
Um, those are projected revenues based on our admin. Um, those are projected revenues based on our admins for the, the administration of fees that we will be collecting from each one of the grants. We've got, um, up to two percent on most of the grants that have been authorized for admin fees. In fact, we're working on a reimbursement for some of that right now.
So, so what, but the, when we end up with an unres, ending of unreserved fund balance, negative one hundred and forty thousand, that will be because of the lag period in billing for these?
Yes, yes.
All right, fair enough.
And, uh, Grace, has anybody on this stuff here done a projection on the grants when-
I got one.
You think we'll be getting them, the jobs will be finished?
Um, I have not really run that yet because we have so many that are running and that will be several years. So I haven't really looked at when things will be winding down to where we will have any-
Well, I'd like to be able to get some kind of a idea at what point in time we're going to be able to at least start phasing out long-term. And I, I'm not convinced that we need the two top people that we have, and I'd like to get an idea how long I think that we will need them. I mean, because we're budgeted a year-
Right.
Ahead of time.
Right.
So this is through the end of December.
I, I, I think we need some kind of briefing that lets us all get a, a handle on or, or feel confident that we really need them for how long?
We can do that. We'll get something going on that.
I'm going to ask a question to John. John, based on, on your knowledge of the grants and that, whatnot that we're working on, we, we are on the hook to give updated reports as we progress, or is that handled by the long-term recovery team or is that handled by Jackie's office?
They don't, long-term recovery team will come in, update on progress where we're at.
Okay, so we have a continuing monitoring requirement?
They come in to agree with us here, but you walk more often than you want to.
I'm talking about with the actual granting agencies.
Oh, the granting agencies?
Yeah.
But we can, we can do that more often, yeah?
I'm just wondering, do we have ongoing requirements?
We have been doing that.
But not, not before the commissioner's court?
No, no, I'm talking about things that you need to continue to report to the granting agencies as these projects are put into motion.
Okay.
What, what we really need is, we need a, a list of all the grants that we have and where, where they are in the stages. You know, we're finishing up, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I think we've got requirement, time requirements on some of them. We've got to spend the money within so many years or-
Yeah. I, I would like to see, uh, a list of all the grants that we have, what the funding is, where we are in the funding and what are projected total also. Of course, some of that, I know that it's, it's real ambiguous right now, but, but one of the things that, that nobody's asked me, but somebody's going to ask me, is how many grants do y'all have outstanding? I have any idea. Uh, but if we could get that, you know, at least maybe quarterly or, or whatever, it would sure help us. Well, we're getting close to the end of this, so on next year's budget, we won't need this money, or we'll have to put this money in for maintenance or whatever.
We have a, we have a matrix that balances out what we're, where we're at and where the projects are. And I can do is I can, I'll say that, you want it quarterly or quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, no, no sooner than quarterly.
Yeah.
And some of these grants are in different phases. For instance, the grant that we're fronting for the, uh, Nav District, that's phase one is all.
That's phase one, yes.
So, and, and based on the results of phase one, there might be a phase two, but we don't know that for sure at this point in time.
The money's been, is that there?
I, I, I understand, yeah. So it's-
So, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, if it gets separated between these are grants that we have, these are grants that we'll probably get, and these are grants that we've requested.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Some of the ambiguity is built into the process and we don't have any control over the process is part of the problem.
Well, and I, and I know they're basically, anything that comes up is possible they're applying for, but I think most of these, these money streams have some date that they're going to, they're going to run out and that's, they're going to be over with. And I, I think we need to have a better, better knowledge of that stuff worth.
The C D, the D O B out for two years. The project update has to be-
Two years from the, two years from the date you sign the contract.
The date out is which is last, so the block is running. So the teams, pushing, pushing, pushing to get to that, into that two-year one to finish the project, or we can, we'll request extensions.
And with the, like, the FEMA P A projects, we've got two.
What's P A?
P A is our public assistance, that's the courthouse, and Cedar Bio are both the, the two projects that are still, uh, working. Insurance, we've got, you know, the aquarium and we've got the hangars and we've got some other stuff that the insurance is doing. So there's a lot of moving parts.
Right, I understand that. And we, I, I just don't have a handle on that at all. And, you know, if we could do something where-
What I'll ask you to do is, is take a measures, make it really easy for everybody to read, to understand which, you know, start dates, termination dates, and basically what line to approach and what, where you're going to, where we're at. And then you'll, you'll, I'll have our people nice and, we have it, it jumps around a little bit, but we're going to do it so that you guys can all be with it.
Jackie, before we get off of this, um, the, if you go to the detail on long-term recovery, which is on page one-twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
We show actual amounts for two thousand and nineteen on, um, on various expense categories. I'm just looking, trying to find out the revenues. The revenues in two thousand and nineteen though were only forty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, that was the Red Cross grant. Up until November of two thousand and nineteen, uh, William and Kim were still under the other grant. The, uh, in, uh, Jennifer's was the Red Cross grant and that was the only one that we actually were having to pay. So part of that, that you're seeing as far as us being, fund balance being a negative is because we did pay them two months. Those will be some of the funds that we'll be requesting this, this year.
Okay, so these are lagged, once again, lag, lag considerations?
Yes.
Okay.
These are-
And the expenditures you'll see were more than the Jennifer salary, but that was the two months that William and Kim went on as employees as of November first.
Looking at the hospitalization insurance, um, two oh three, I guess we've got three employees that we're charging through there?
Are they up, are William and Kim, yes. They all three are on there yet, sir.
Okay.
They're all three on our group insurance?
Yes, sir.
Are they, are they considered to be county employees?
Yes, they are all three county employees.
The only-
Permanent, permanent, short-term county employee, or permanent.
It's the only way we can get reimbursed.
Okay, all right, okay.
Which three employees, uh, just, are we talking?
William and Kim and Jennifer Heard.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Now, is Jennifer going to stay on, Jennifer is a permanent employee, right?
They're all three permanent.
They're all three permanent at this time.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Charlie, I would like to say I did go back and see your lows, that percentage is about four percent increase overall with the extra payroll period.
So if we want to stay at three and a half, we have to cut someplace else to make up for the payroll period hit?
Well, if you've got twenty-five payroll periods in a year, it would naturally be four percent. You have twenty-six, and then we're going to go to twenty-seven. So it has to be less than four percent.
Well, over four percent.
You saying moving from twenty-six to twenty-seven can't get you to four percent?
Mathematically impossible. If it, if that's strictly what it is, but there are some step increases in there.
Well, there, but there's also an, an employee because we were authorized another employee. Um, I'm trying to think, there was somebody else that got another employee?
Uh, tax office.
Okay, tax office. So there were two employees that were added that were not in last year's budget, so are not, and not planned in-
But we haven't gotten to those departments yet, is what I'm saying.
True, but she's looking at overall.
Okay, overall, fair enough.
Okay. All right, uh, well, Judge, Judge McGinnis is here instead of Judge Dubnik, but- Yeah, we're running early. Uh, you might as well, uh, if you're here and she's not, so we'll, we'll let you get up here.
Jump on in.
Come on up.
There's that, that, that mic is live and the people, there are people on Zoom that can't hear unless you grab the mic.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. Judge McGinnis, age twenty-five and one thirty-one.
See, this is one of those classic cases that we've been talking about right here. That twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-dollar variance to the upside is because of an additional employee. That's not all.
But my employee was, that budget was already set several years ago, which I had never utilized until this year.
Well-
And I still have another half of employee I have not-
Was it in last, but it wasn't in this, this year's budget?
Yes.
Really?
It should have been.
But if you look, there's a decrease right underneath it.
There's still a, an employee, a part-time employee that I have not hired.
No, the only point I'm making is that's not due to the additional pay period is what I'm saying. There's other factors involved in it.
Before you came in, we were talking about, we have to, we have to hit a three and a half percent increase or we have legal problems. And so we're trying to figure out how much is of the increase we're seeing here under personnel is due to the simple fact that we have an extra payroll period this year. We're trying to untangle, how much is payrolling, payroll period, uh, increase and how much is just change in personnel or change in other parts of the budget?
See, in two thousand and twenty, you had, uh, people in the regular, and also you had salary part-time, transferred one from part-time for this year coming up, although it actually changed the budget during this year, two thousand and twenty. Because it's just changing from one line item to another.
Right, and that, that would be only the salary part. What changed was the retirement and, uh, insurance because it went so that she can get, uh, benefits. Other than that, the salary should not have changed in mine or Judge Dubnik's because we already had it preset from previous years.
So what we're saying is the difference between the twenty-one, three ninety and the eighteen thousand, two hundred is due to the additional pay period.
The twenty-one, three ninety, and then what's the first thing?
Eighteen thousand, two hundred, so that would be three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. That's about right.
So we did, we moved portions of her part-time into the full-time.
Right.
Y I O to make up for that four times forty. So we did not have to increase her budget at all.
Not for the year two thousand and twenty, but it does have taken impact in two thousand and twenty-one because of the, uh, increase in the, in the hospitalization.
Right.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Anything else for Judge McGinnis?
I got one question. Office supplies.
There's a problem with the office supplies. Office supplies was because we had storage and they were supposed to have either put it under the juvenile case managed office supplies or undermine, which it didn't matter because we were both somewhat the same. So I think one year they put it undermine, I think is how we started it. And if you look at the case manager.
One thirty-one.
Um, they didn't put anything under hers, but it's just the notation that the storage should be on either one of ours. So we've just kind of been flexing on our budget to make sure that we don't go over it, to make sure we paid for the storage.
You're saying you alternate between, instead of splitting in fifty?
Yeah, it's, it should be under the juvenile case manager. I just told them to leave it under my budget and then, because my budget was, uh, had to where I can flex a little bit to pay for that instead of doing an increase. Other than that, I didn't do much to the budget at all.
Good.
But I would like to see an increase in our salaries because I know myself and Judge Mills have been working our tails off the last, not this, this year, last year, two thousand seventeen.
You probably need to tell that to the legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be in a jam this year with the three and a half percent.
I don't have anything due to legislation on salary. That goes from commissioner's court.
Right.
We have a three and a half percent cap now. And, and so if, if the payroll period is going to eat that up or even exceed it, we have to look for cuts someplace else, not increases.
I'd still like to ask formally for a pay raise. And I'll even ask for Judge Mills if he doesn't ask for himself. We've really been working hard.
We were actually thinking about just getting a pay decrease for all the elected officials.
Well, yeah.
Might need to.
We were thinking about it.
Yeah, keep thinking. Other than that, I don't have any.
But it never hurts to ask, okay?
Yeah, I'm going to ask because we really have been working hard.
All right, appreciate it, Judge.
Thank you.
I think that's all.
Does that have to say that you don't work hard normally?
Are the constables coming in or, I know Phillips isn't, but is Doc coming in or do we know? I, I don't think, well, which, Charlie's didn't change at all. And what, what did Doc's?
I don't think Doc's did either.
He'd be here if it was, if he needed.
Have we kind of updated on Charlie? How's he doing?
Not well, was the last time I heard.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, uh, both Constable One and Constable Two have showed decreases in their budgets, so.
And we can't argue with that.
No, no.
All right, uh, well, let's see if Judge McGinnis wants to come in.
Me, Judge Dubnik?
She's having problems with court.
Oh.
Right now, she's running behind.
No problem.
Would it let Elma come in out of?
Well, yeah, Elma.
She would get through Elma, that's half of the budget. Thirty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-one, one fifteen, one twenty-two, and one forty-two.
Yeah, okay. It's a lot of pages. Thank you.
It'd be nice if we could get them all in the same section, but. Charlie, she slid that to you, Charlie.
For the Treasurers Department, I have no changes whatsoever. I, um, as far as the hotel motel, um, clerk person that I have, the position right now is not filled. Um, one of my deputies is doing a haffy-haffy. Uh, I do want to leave that there if the hotel motel funds can afford it. So other than that, I have no changes on the Treasurers Department.
Jackie, on page thirty-one, I see that insurance premiums, line four sixty, have been eliminated. What did we, is that a change in where we're charging this?
Um, that's the bonds. Bonds. What we did was we separated and instead of charging all of the bonds to the insurance, we created a line on them that says bonds and then, so you'll see it all under the bonds instead of the insurance.
Well, but, but we don't have anything left in insurance premiums.
I have no insurance.
No, she doesn't have anything. All of that would be under facilities for our, our buildings. We don't split that out to each department. Their bonds are the only thing that they would have.
Okay.
So, how, how come the amount is, is less? I mean, I can see you can rename it bonds, but it looks like it's like half the amount.
It's two hundred and sixty, uh, dollars a year per person. Um, I don't know why the eighteen hundred was there because when we pay the treasurer's bond, it's when I come into office and we pay it for the whole four years and, and get it over with, like most elected officials. So I don't know why the eighteen hundred was there.
Probably just carried over.
Um, it could be that they didn't have it in the Assistance Department and that's It could be that they didn't have it in the Assistance Department and that's what it, you know, it was in there also, so. I don't know why the 1,800 lessed.
Probably just carried over from prior year, it would be my, my thought on that.
Then, if you go to the Assistance Department, this is page, I have no page number on here. Which is paying the people that run the indigent healthcare.
Probably going to be page 40, 142.
On the salaries, because I had a person that was here for 29 years and her, because of tenure, the wage had gotten on up there. The person, the position that I'm replacing it with is $10,000 less. I will have a $10,000 less in salary for, with the same position. The only sad part about that is it doesn't go back into the general fund. This money comes from the healthcare sales tax.
Why are we?
Part about it.
Why are we?
No changes on anything else on that.
Do you have any changes in any of your departments?
There is a few. When you get to the healthcare sales tax, of course, we indigent healthcare is going to, right now, we have the same expenditures as we did last year until Jerry Cox gives us numbers. So we don't know what that's going to be. It will be 8% of our tax levy. Healthcare sales tax.
What, what pages?
124.
The items that we pay for out of that, like I say, $10,000 less to the Assistance Department for the salaries. I personally would recommend that the employee that we brought in that gets paid out of the healthcare sales tax, if you look on, transfer to general fund, that $306,000 possibly could be paid out of the general fund now that the health issues are not as crucial as they were after the storm. That's completely here nor there. Trying to leave more money in the healthcare sales tax fund for, I foresee, even though grant money is going to pay for the microhospital, I feel like in the future, we're going to have to have.
Based on the last treasury report, we had $2 million between the two funds sitting there.
Right, but looking at the microhospital in the future, I don't know if we want to take some of the things like the.
If we put it in the general fund, we'd have to raise taxes on the people out there.
Okay, just a suggestion.
Is that your, is that your suggestion to us, to raise taxes?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you. I got a question, have we, have we talked about the hotel motel fund yet?
Nope. Other than the employee.
If you go to page 70, I've got some questions there. If you look at the lead sheet on the previous page, we're showing that a projected ending balance in the fund at the end of this year running from 330,000 to 517,000. And the rate, way we're getting there is because we're restoring revenues, which is probably a decent situation if we, if we get through this pandemic. But if you look down under, under the uses of it, I see that we've increased the Rockport Center for the Arts and the Maritime Museum. And we seem to have increased the aquarium, but then down below, we haven't made any other increases there. So we're going to have more funds. I'm just wondering, is it keeping all of that in there? Why are we having such a huge proposed increase in our, our fund balance?
Well, for starters, the Center for the Arts, the Maritime and Aquarium are a percent of your revenue. So the higher the revenues go, the more money they're projected to get. I don't know about the fund balance, Jackie, did you prepare that part?
Just running from year to year on that. Actually, I'm showing the fund balance going down.
Hotel motel.
No, I'm sorry, hotel motel, you're right, it is going up. And I don't know, other than, you know, the percentages. And it may be that some of these percentages need to be corrected based on what we know the hotel motel is going to be.
The revenues were projected, I think at, at a level 6% of 2019 collections kind of comparison, which I think is conservative unless we have more stuff goes on around here.
Why? Why are we anticipating an additional 125,000 in revenues for hotel motel tax?
Oh, they were closed this year.
Already down. Like I say, it's kind of, we took a 2019 and kind of based it on that. 17, 18, 19 were all off.
2019 was a banner year. I mean, everything was good.
Not really, if you go back to 2016, we actually had more.
That's actually the year that we all look at and the chamber looks at, you know, that's where we want to get back to. That's where our possibilities are, plus some, because since the storm, we've added so many rental houses, it's ridiculous.
You're asking why, why it doesn't go down because of COVID? I mean, why is the projection so rosy?
No, I just, you know, we're looking at 260,000 projected through the end of the year. And we're 125,000 more proposed for '21. I just was wondering, that's, that's a large increase for over one period. Of course, you know, if they, if they lift COVID again and we have the two months or the month that we had committed, it'll probably exceed that, I mean, because we were full. I mean, everything, everything, you know, before we had to go back to the, to the COVID nonsense. I don't think you still have people. We have a lot of people here, yeah.
We had one month, but it wasn't so good, which is, was it March or April? I can't remember which, probably April.
Probably the month that they closed the hotel.
Right, April. But it popped right out. And I feel like it will throughout the summer.
I think, you know, maybe the projected, sorry, the projection of 260,000 is probably low. I mean, I'm looking at right now, we're at 114,000 and we're just now getting into our peak season, so.
Yeah, but, but I drove by the beach on, on Saturday and it was half of what it was the previous Saturday. And I realized the weather was kind of.
Previous weekends were probably record.
Oh, I'm sure they were, yeah. Anyway, I, I just, 125,000 dollar increase just seems to me like a, that's a, you know, that's a 40%.
One question, hotels were closed for quite a period there, was that based on a governor, a governor's directive, Judge?
Hotels, they closed on their own.
Did they close on their own?
We also shut down short-term rentals by order.
Oh, yeah, they said, they said, they'd rather, okay, yes, we shut them down. Because they said if we shut them down, they could get insurance.
You feel like they would have closed anyway, so.
But the, the estimate of 387, though, is a fairly decent estimate if you go back and look at pre-storm and pre-COVID and all the rest of this stuff.
Granted that we're having to guess somewhat how things will recover in 2021. I, you know, I guess we all hope by then we'll be back on a, a regular footing and a little more like the long-term trend after the storm.
Or, you know, we're in, you know, if it's going July and we've, you know, there's no set time that I'm aware of where we're going to reduce restrictions from what they are today because the COVID things keep increasing. So I'm, I'm thinking we're at least three months out before we even start to get recovered. And then we're going to be in the wintertime, which will be winter taxes. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that.
But, and, but.
2021 is really about summer.
The expenditures for hotel motel tell are relative to what comes in, what goes out is relative to what comes in.
Yeah.
We don't get the money, they don't get it either.
Well, on the three entities.
Going into our general fund.
On the three entities, you've got the chamber and the maintenance, and all those are set amounts.
And if you'll recall, I think that the Commissioners' Court, was it four years ago or five years ago, adopted a policy to maintain at least one year's worth of potential commitments in that fund going out there. So we're probably looking at being able, I wouldn't suggest this year until this, everything clears up, I may be able to spend more money on, on advertising and some other things if this thing materializes like it does, like it's being shown here. But that's, hey, that's neither here nor there, just like one who made the comment, if it comes in, it can go out, but if it doesn't come in, it can't go out for long.
And keep in mind, the 38,500 for the aquarium is not going to be spent, it's left in the budget. But until the aquarium is actually built back, we will, if I'm right, Jackie, we will not.
Will we accrue that?
Aquarium.
Or we just won't pay it?
We haven't been paying it. Unless the Commissioners feel like, but basically, I think they need to be open is what the Commissioners had decided. So that money is still sitting there in the budget, say if they were to open tomorrow, it's there.
Okay, and along that same line, if we go to page 73 on the venue tax fund, we've got an aquarium education building and we've been budgeting 40,000 and this year jumps up to 79.6. What is the rest?
Yes, sir, our lease is up, we have to pay the lease to the Nav District. It was a 10-year lease and in 2021, we need to pay that again. That is for the 20 years provided that, or the 10 years, I'm sorry, provided they don't.
But we could pay that by the year if we wish, right?
We could pay it by the year, yes.
Okay.
They did have, give us a better rate, I believe, a lease amount if we paid it in a 10-year increment.
Are both numbers in the lease where you have the option if you wanted to change?
I believe so, I'd have to, I've got the lease on my desk, I don't have it memorized. I think they're both, there's two different numbers, there's one for an annual and in the one for.
What's the, what's the total on the lease?
36, I believe it's 39, if I'm not mistaken. 39.6. 39.6 is what the lease is for 10 years.
I noticed that our, our collection account, which is the one on 73, is still kind of running along thinly. And yet we're sitting there with over $760,000 in our maintenance account. And we've, and projecting 768,000 at the end of 2021 here. It would seem that maybe we could transfer some of those funds back, I don't know. Unless we've got some big need for these maintenance funds sitting there.
In the venue tax account?
Venue tax project, 295.
Have you all, have you been keeping up with the, do you have maintenance on the, on the projects that you haven't been doing?
We are, we're not.
Alma, are we through with you?
Minimum budget, but we are doing what we have to. Right now, we're working on.
Jackie, that is the fund that we had talked about because you have on here, transfer out of the venue tax account to the venue projects. That's the one that we always discuss whether we will need to keep funding the venue projects or not.
Yes.
So that's 149,000 there.
Well, you could always reverse the flow of funds in order to handle debt if it became necessary. I'm just wondering if you want to go ahead and do that ahead of time or?
I mean, we can always eliminate the transfer this time, this year, 2021, to ensure that we have.
Equalize it out a little bit. That doesn't cramp anything that you would do, right? What is that, 100?
The fund balance that is in, no, that's not, it's in the, the CIP that includes the reserves. It's not in the 295, it's in 3.
310.
So we do have to keep the, we've got like $217,000 in reserves and that needs to stay in for the bond.
So we only have the indigent healthcare fund to look at.
The indigent healthcare, I don't have any numbers on that because it goes, it's based off of our tax levy, which Jerry doesn't give me those numbers until July-ish. He usually gives me preliminary numbers to figure those. But it, you know, basically, it will be the same mandate, 8% of our tax levy.
And I think right now, we've just put what was already in there because we know the lease.
In assistance?
We went over that, the Assistance Department, the salary, that's the one with the salary going down about $10,000. Other than that, everything else is the same.
Refresh my memory there, we've got $116,000 worth of salaries, full-time employees in assistance.
Which is now about 105, I gave Jackie the change.
Right, we've got a change that is not in the stuff, she just gave it to me, it will be in your.
That is three employees that do the indigent healthcare program.
Okay, so that's, that's where we're, we're funding the assist, the indigent healthcare out of the Assistance Fund?
Yes.
Why, why won't we just put it in indigent healthcare?
Because there is rules and regulations of what you spend the healthcare sales tax on. So part of the, what we use the healthcare sales tax for is to provide the indigent healthcare. Kind of a vicious circle there.
Well, the healthcare sales tax is funding the assistance anyway, though, right?
Right.
So it seems to me like we're just kind of chasing ourselves there.
I don't know if it can have salary line items is what I'm trying to say, I guess, we could check on it.
Fair enough.
It's clear that the fund can pay medical bills, it's just not clear whether it can pay salaries of people who administer those payments.
The indigent healthcare program.
Yeah.
Yes. But whether the healthcare sales tax fund can actually have a salary line item or not, that would be.
We would have to check the statutes.
Have to check the statutes on that.
I don't have any more questions, Judge.
So one other item I want to bring up is what I passed out to you. Human Resources and the judge both had asked me earlier in the year or late last year, I don't remember which, because of issues with employees or possible lawsuits or whatnot, is to look at the electronic time clock system one more time. Those are the numbers, we're looking at, you know, 17, 18, 19,000 limitation in training, 10,000 or better annual cost. You're looking at about 12,000, 13,000 clocks to punch in. I am not personally recommending this, but I did want to bring the numbers because I was asked to revisit the situation. I just don't see where it's worth the money. We're working on a little bit better time sheet, so to say, we're, instead of just saying they work eight hours, we'll have the in and out and the in and out. You may think that's very simple to do, but it gets complicated and trying to round it to the 15 minutes. Employees are probably not going to like a change, but we're going to throw it out to a couple of departments and see how it works and eventually implement it across the board.
Who are we currently with, Alma?
Who are we with? We have no time clock system.
With our own little time sheet.
Okay.
Simply because of what it costs. And they, these all would integrate with our accounting system, but like I say, it's just not worth 20, 30,000.
So what you're saying is if we went with a time clock, we could save payroll?
No, I don't see where you would save anything. You, you know, the payroll person would have to do probably just as much work, the auditors would have to do just as much work. I don't see where it would save any time.
So you had it, each person, when you, when you came in the building, your badge would key the clock?
That's what these are doing. But the units themselves, you know, if we, we estimated at least five proximity readers, which would be where you swipe your thing, that's 12, 13,000 dollars just to buy the units.
Well, the only thing that I would, the thing that might justify it, I think you would have to have somebody independent audit some of these timesheets and see if the way it's currently, currently being done, there are any instances where people aren't there, basically being there on their time sheet.
And you have a swiper or a fun print or log on with your computer? Trust me, employees or department heads will find. Trust me, employees or department heads will find a way to cheat, if you want to call it, just as well. So this isn't going to protect, I don't think, against what's turned into my department to run his payroll. They can, they can tweak the system just as well as.
In our current system, doesn't the department head or elected official sign off on those?
Yes. Considered a legal document. But my, in my position, and the auditors also, we can question time sheets as to the clarification of what they're trying to tell us, but we are not time clock police. If I know personally that somebody ain't in the office and they turn in a straight eight, there's not really a whole lot that I can do about it.
Yeah, that happens.
Happens every day. So would you save enough money?
You're, you're the, you're the elected official, the department head in charge of those employees that come out of the budget that the commissioners' court approved every year that you have total control over for the most part. If you've got somebody doing that, you need to fire their ass.
That's not my department.
You're not her employees.
Oh, not your employees, I thought you were talking about your employees.
No, other, other departments.
Every department.
But, you know, is it worth spending all this money just to catch a few hours here and there, here and there, here and there? It's there for y'all to look at.
Do all of these systems have the same characteristic where only the person who's the employee can actually punch in?
Right, some of them is.
Fingerprint or?
With the swiper, some of them are set up with, when they log into their computers, some of them are mobile apps, say like the SO may want to use the mobile app where if they start third day from their house, they can log in there, whatever. There's different means. I think most of them do give the department head a, of course, we can control who can tweak, so to say, the final that comes to me at the end of the pay period, but usually, in most experience I've had in the past, the department head can adjust.
You know, this pandemic has created a stay-at-home generation now, and that's going to be a problem going forward, it seems, in order to monitor something like that. I don't know how it's handled in the private industry as well. My information is outdated there. But I know people that work at home, and they keep talking about the fact that these folks are a lot more productive working at home. I'm not sure how they compute that either.
But this type of a system there, again, they can log on at home and then take off and go do the laundry or mow the grass, or whatever, you don't know. So same difference as the paper, I don't, I don't see where it's going to save you any money in what you're paying out for missed time.
Some people are actually seeing savings, because if you look at, say, the budget for county employees to go to a conference, if you did it all online.
Yeah, it's always a lot cheaper.
And plus travel and stuff, there's potential for substantial, they.
Sure, well, just think about this, I mean, rather than building a big courthouse, maybe you can get by with a quarter of the size.
We can stay right here.
Exactly.
I'm the one that suggested it.
Landlord wouldn't let us.
The landlord would love to sell the whole place to us.
For, for less than they cost of the courthouse.
Yeah.
But just like Commissioner Cashline just said, we'll probably have a, quite a bit of money left in everybody's budget this year because you didn't go to conference, I know mine was knocked down already. I have another conference in November, will I go, I don't know. We're actually having a money handling class that they changed to Zoom in a couple of weeks, and, I mean, I'm going to pay for any money that wants to take the class simply because I want them to, because I have that much money left in my budget because I didn't go to conference. It costs about a thousand dollars every time you go to conference, almost, between hotels and stuff, so.
Well, as hard as it is to, you know, monitor employees who are off-site, working, telecommuting, whatever, it, you never really get past the problem that a department head has to know whether a particular employee is producing work that's worth the salary. And if they're at home working and they don't seem to be producing, that's just something a department head has to consider, should we keep that, that employee or not?
And so that is on the department heads.
It's not so much, you know, how many hours they sit with their, you know, attached to their chair, it's, what are they producing, and is it worth it?
But that, like I was saying, that's not one thing that, when I get a time sheet in, that I can question.
Right, and time sheets and how you.
Because the department head has authorized it.
It has to do with the department head looking at what they produce, not when they clocked in and when they clocked out.
Along with that, are we furnishing them computers and internet access if they're working?
You have to ask Colin, he's not here, probably so.
I, I know some departments that were furnishing computers.
Personally, I wouldn't use my personal computer for any county business, but.
If, if you have it where they have to, you know, if they're working on something that doesn't require the computer, which most of them wouldn't, but, you know, they have to, you know, show it every fifteen-minute login or something like that. Whenever I was, in my, in my much younger days, I worked for Phillips Petroleum as a management analyst, and we did snapshots, every fifteen minutes, we looked to see what was going on across all the employees that we were looking at. And it was amazing how many people were, looked like they were working and really weren't. And you can't, and you're on a five or six-week period, you can't hide what you're doing, you just can't do it.
Any other questions for me?
They need to have some way to.
Nope.
They need to have some way to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John.
What do you want to do first?
I think we've pretty much discussed the venue projects and.
Yes, the pathways or the venue taxes is, is the same as it was last year. Once we had the pandemic, I just, we just pulled it back, and we're going to operate it basically the minimum, keeping things maintained and, you know, no major improvements, so that's, that's how we operated in the last three years.
Are you seeing that the stuff is, you're able to maintain it?
Yeah, we're, we're, a lot of our, we just finished the, the history center, we just repainted it, and it, after the storm, it was needing it, we held off, held off, and we painted it starting last year. And so it's been done, it's looking great. The bridge, we did an inspection on the bridge, and there's some planks that are starting to rot. So we're actually replacing planks six years, I guess that's our life expectancy on some of this wood, so where we, it's going to get replaced and we're going to stain it, so the big, that's basically what we're doing. We're not doing any major, we have a project, the Southern Trail Project, but that's funded through the bond and, and a grant.
Have we ever come up with a way to monitor the sites and see the activity and?
You know, no, I don't know how we do that, I really don't. Most of it is, is, and some of our, our biggest challenge right now with pathways is volunteers. We've, we lost, with the storm, we lost our volunteer base, and we have yet to be able to attract a reasonable base of new volunteers. What I mean by this is that what happens is volunteers are out there and, and you, you basically see folks and you ask them where they're from, and, and try to get a feel for how many people are visiting, but I think we have a fair amount of visitors in our venues. Our, our website has a lot of hits, sometimes a thousand hits a month on the website. So that's people who are mostly birders and stuff looking for places to go to bird. During migration, because now I'm, my wife and I bird, so we're out there during migration, we had a pile of people at the, at the venues. Pile, it was big, it was a great year for it, too.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Happy day.
Judge.
Doc? We already skipped you because we didn't see any changes in you, but if you wanted to address this, go ahead.
Oh, I'm good, I can add anything to mine this year.
All right, okay.
And my judge may be a little bit late, she's doing important Zoom night.
That's what I hear, uh, do you, can you give us an update on Charlie? You can't either.
Very little information.
Yeah, nobody's given any real information, I've got some the other day, secondhand, that he wasn't doing good at all, but.
Doc, if you have to continue handling both precincts between now and the end of the year.
The sheriff's office, they're doing a lot of their.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Good.
I mean, we're ready to do some of them, but we've done some beginning of the year.
Okay, I thought.
And actually, actually, this morning, I did one that came in the mailbox, and today, the precinct, I had to. And there's some other ones that might come in, we just go ahead and do those, they're just sitting over there with all this stuff.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't think we have anything else for you. Appreciate it. Animal Control, Lori.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm doing all right.
I'm not sure how this works, so.
Things are going good at your place, I can, I already know that.
They are, they are, on our budget, I looked at where money was not being spent to move it where it'd be most, most cost-effective. I did think that we needed a thousand dollars more in food, but looking at chemical, I think I can move a thousand from there because we've switched cleaners to a more productive, non-corrosive, which will save our building in essence. And it's around about a thousand dollars a year, guess estimate, you know, I've just taken over this position, so I'm trying to figure where we can do better and cut costs and turn it over, but do know with, we want to stay at the ninety percent live release rate, means we have to feed them and care for them longer. So that's something, if we want to stay there, we have to consider.
Lori, I noticed on line nine four seventy.
Yes.
That's a huge increase.
If that money has been there, I don't know what it was for.
Okay, so you're not proposing any of that?
I split it up, I believe I moved it to, I think, did we, we split that, didn't we, Jackie?
Yes, it's taken out of there and it's been split between some of the other departments, it's been split between conference and to follow through, building repairs. That forty-six hundred that you're looking at is a decrease.
Right, right, I saw that, I just wondered where.
Yes, we just moved it between those other two.
Because conference is, there was not even enough to maintain their.
Certification.
Certifications, I can't think of the word, certification, it cost me almost just to get mine, and I am not done yet. It's going to be right around a thousand dollars just to get certified, so my goal is work on retention, so and if they go to a conference or on Zoom or whatever, the more excited they are to being there, the more I'm going to retain them. It makes a better, we have a good staff and I want to keep them, and that gets you pumped up. Compassion fatigue is a real thing in our line of work that, you know, we very seldom, we don't euthanize very often, but the girls did go to Victoria and they said, if I had to work here, I couldn't do it. Where it's a game and there's no compassion or any sense of humanity, you know, towards the animals, so I want to keep these girls, so if I can get them excited, keep them excited, talking with people, hitting the pay pound, working on retention, what can we do to keep your animal with you? That's what the new goal is actually of everybody, I just spoke with the Taka president of Texas Animal Controls, he's at a ninety-seven percent, and I just, without a strong spay and neuter program, to heat, hit our underserved people, we're just kind of at a loss. You know, the average cat can come into heat, they come into heat from four months continually till they're bred, and then it starts over. So that's where cats are so different than dogs, you know, that's twice a year. But we're doing good things and, but I can move that money from chemical.
And on your, on your.
Really looking at it.
On your office equipment, the stuff, are you not adding anything?
Our biggest thing right now is we've got to get something on the wifi. Dispatch calls me on my cell phone, I can run through the building to get it, but they very seldom call me on my office phone, if anybody gets hurt, they can't call us. It, it's very difficult out there right now with cell service, that's our biggest drawback, and everybody calls me on my cell phone.
I got a quick.
But I got to run to a door.
Jackie, I'm just, just looking at the numbers here, I'm having trouble. Animal Control, page fifty-one, they're proposing for two thousand twenty-one, three hundred and fifteen thousand seven ninety-nine, projected for two thousand twenty-three oh seven, and yet we're showing a thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollar decrease. Is that a bust somehow?
And what we did, we have to, since position changed and Lori is appointed, we have to create that one oh two one item, so we moved some of the full-time salary into the appointed.
Well.
I think that's what is creating that.
What number is right, though, I mean?
The total is still down, thirty-eight thousand.
Well, projected for two thousand twenty-three seventy-five, is that number correct?
What are you looking at, Charlie?
I'm looking at the totals on the last two, projected for twenty and proposed for two thousand twenty-one, and the variance number there. I'm, I'm.
All right, it looks like it projected and proposed.
It's showing, it's showing that it's going down by thirty-eight thousand nine nineteen, but yet the, the totals at the bottom is going up by six thousand dollars. I'm just questioning whether these are correct numbers or not, on the totals.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like they foot somehow, because you've got three oh eight going up to three sixteen, but it shows a decrease of thirty-eight. Well, we'll, we'll check on that number and make sure that we've got it correct.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, only other problem that I know that you have is your truck died, right?
Yes, it did, it went to the shop and it did not come back.
So you're down a vehicle, did you?
I am, I don't have one.
Nothing's coming out of the sheriff's office, even a patrol car yet, but I think we're working on it, anyway.
Even if we, I, I don't care, I don't want to spend, I would prefer not to spend a lot of money on anything, that's my goal, I'm a penny pincher, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't like waste. So if I can get to use something, I'm fine with that, because it's just mostly for me, for running errands and things like that. My food gets delivered, I did switch to More Than Feed to support a local business instead of Chewy, I feel strongly about that, so.
Please, don't ever apologize for being a penny pincher, okay?
Especially not at a budget meeting.
Well, I know, but I, I did spend quite a bit of money, but the girls did not have new catch poles, that is a safety issue. They didn't work, there's a lot, I've got a lot of catching up to make it safe for our people, I mean, it has to be, when you go out in the field, you've got to have good working equipment.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Ask me, I know.
Now, how many?
The first, first time I was on.
How many animals are you currently housing?
Right now, today, I, we have twenty-five cats and we have fifteen dogs, I believe, we were at two.
Yeah.
And then we kind of had an explosion, which.
What happened?
What happened, I mean, we have, I did switch software, I don't know if you're aware. They did have Shelter Pro, which is a totally redundant antiquated program. We now have Shelter Manager, which nationally, that we have, all our adoptables go out nationwide on Adopt a Pet, Pet Finder. As soon as their time hold is up, they go out, I do have a dog, a Minnie Ossie, who would go into Rhode Island because of this. So Tana is instrumental in getting all that ready, but we have animals now looking at Corpus, Denton, all around. We, we get them from all over now, which helps.
It's on a website?
Yeah, Adopt a Pet and Pet Finder, you just type in a zip code, I mean, we're competing with Humane Society and everything, but for forty-five dollars.
How do, how do we get, how do we get a dog from, from here to Rhode Island?
Well, we have to get them all ready, they have to, Tana takes care of that part, I mean, we do the neuter, like on this one particularly, Minnie Ossie, do the neuter, we take care of that, she's already paid us the adoption fee. I believe he's going to go on rescue road trips, because if you follow any animal industry, he's the biggest transportation. He hits New Jersey, Connecticut, makes a loop down south.
So he takes several at a time.
He's, has a brand-new semi, I just, he was just on, he started back up again, he's got a new semi with a big tractor, trailer, air-conditioned, and the animals are, they stop, they have designated stop where people get them off, walk them, they load back up and go. Certain ones have dropped off at this, they're picked up, their gotcha day is there. Certain ones have dropped off at this, they're picked up, their gotcha day is there. So he will be going to Connecticut. They live in New Jersey and they will pick him up.
What does that cost?
I think it was about a hundred and sixty-five, but the person pays that. Yeah, we just get them ready to go and they pay all the thing other than.
Awesome.
Yeah, but.
It's great.
But it's an opportunity to get them out.
All right, keep up the good work. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. Linda Doan? Linda, come on up.
Morning.
Good morning. How are things going in your department?
Good. So I'm not really asking for changes on the bottom half here. The office supplies, the reason that change is there is because currently when we order lanyards or ID badge covers and things like that, it's coming out of non-department. And I was thinking, my department is usually the ones that distributes these to new employees. So it made more sense to move that money from the non-department into mine. It's just a suggestion. That's the difference there. The postage. We have Tac do our ten ninety-five Bs and Cs for the healthcare that they have to send out every year. In the past, we've been paying them, I think they charge like two ninety-five per form to send out. They go ahead and prepare the forms and if we don't have them send them out, they'll just send them to us in a great big package. And then all we have to do is stamp them and send them out. It saves us about a hundred and ninety-one dollars if my office does it. And we tend to end up with anywhere from twenty to thirty of them that come back to us anyways, and then they're really late. So that's the reason why I put that number in there. It would actually save us rather than cost us more.
Do we currently have the floater in place?
We do. She has worked in seven different departments since she has started.
Have you got a report that shows how much we've saved?
I had hoped to get such reports, but with COVID and everything else that has happened, my office has been overwhelmed, so I have not. I'm sorry.
Feel confident that we have.
Yes, well, I, I definitely feel confident that the job that she is able to do is far significant compared to anything we would have gotten from Sterling. We have always had difficulties getting employees from Sterling. Now we don't have to deal with that when it comes to this type of a position, and this particular lady has a lot of business experience. She's a wealth of information and she's very helpful.
Well, one of the things I see by, by doing this, that's kind of an unintended consequence is whenever they go to like County Clerk's Office or wherever they go, the first time they go there, they're newbies. Second time they go there, they know a little bit about it, but after third or fourth time they go there to relieve somebody, they pretty much have a handle on it. There's not a lot of training.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's the consistency of having a single person.
Yes. And, and because she is working in government, even if she hasn't worked in this particular office, she has a little bit better idea of what's going to happen and what's going to be required than if she was someone coming in out of Corpus. That's usually our Sterling hires are fresh out of high school, fresh out of college. They don't have a lot of experience, rarely fresh out of college, but.
Line one one five was the actual experience on temporary help that we've got from agencies before.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Line one one five, salary, temporary help.
Okay, that was my budget to temporary help that we had prior.
Okay, so if you're looking at the actuals there, I mean, I hate to rehash this over again, but our worst year budget wise was in two thousand twenty for seventy-nine ninety-five, even though we had never exceeded eight hundred and sixty-six dollars in any of the other year. So you think that by having this full-time floater.
The full-time floater is paid by every department that she goes to work in, not my department.
I understand.
That seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five was money that I had requested when, right after Harvey, so that I could get a helper in to help us get our employee records that had never been backed up, backed up and onto some form that we could save them in case we had another storm.
Well, it was actually budgeted seventy-nine ninety-five in two thousand twenty. Was it budgeted before?
No, it had never been budgeted before. That was something that I requested right after the storm for the next year.
Are we actually using that seven nine nine five?
I have not ever been able to get anybody in because of the same reason we were discussing before with Sterling, trying to get somebody in that would have an idea, would take more time to train them, to help me back up these files. So we never used that person. Now, I have used her this year for that, those dollars to help me with Charlotte, that is our now floater. Because during COVID, I lost my person, my part-time, I'm sorry, not my part-time, my assistant for ten weeks because of COVID. So she came, I actually did use those salary dollars to have the floater work in my office as well to help me out.
You've got an increase in total personnel services of thirty-seven thousand some odd. Does that, does that reflect additional personnel, like for instance, the floater, or are we just talking about a pay period increase? That, that is the floater as well as the additional pay period. Am I correct? Because she is budgeted in, in the HR department, but each department reimburses HR and pays her when they use her. So the actual budget numbers are in hers, not split out between all the departments. I mean, I know we're looking at a year when we have an unusual number of pay periods, but I'm looking at also a department budget that's gone up from sixty-eight thousand five years ago to a hundred and sixty-five thousand for this year.
And that's because of the additional employee.
Well, over five years, it's been a steady, you know, ten or ten thousand or so every year. It's not all this year's employee.
What, what departments have been using the floater for the most? You said seven different departments, which.
She's worked in the county auditors, environmental health, the transfer station, maintenance, the county clerk, the county judge, and my office.
Which one has been getting the bulk of it?
I, I honestly couldn't tell you for sure. Not off the top of my head. On the maintenance. Because I know environmental health has used her a lot too.
When will you be reimbursed for that?
I prepare post-journal entries every month.
Do you? Be interesting to see which of your departments.
Okay. Any other questions for Linda?
I don't.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And my favorite one. Ms. Gonzalez, please come forward.
Biggest spender, I'm sure.
Have you made anybody mad today or kicked anybody out of their?
We did. There's somebody on the side of the road that's very upset.
Okay.
With a big trailer. That we've now filed on.
Okay. All right.
Where do you want to start?
Now, let's see, page thirty-seven, I guess.
Environmental. I don't have any changes in environmental.
Wait a minute.
It's forty-six.
Oh, forty-six. I'm sorry. I was looking at the sheriff. I say, what's? Forty-six. Just do think, I know you've been busy. Do you, anything different on your that you want to discuss anything with us?
No, the only thing that's, the only difference is the office on the bio.
Okay, I don't think we have anything to really over with you, so thank you. Appreciate it. All right, back to you, Valerie. Yeah, environmental health.
No changes from last year.
Jackie, have you given any more thought to doing a depreciation, depreciation allocation between departments?
Um, I told you, I have been working on it. I have not got it ready to bring to y'all right now, but there are some thick numbers.
Yeah. Because what it does is it impacts each one of these budgets significantly.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you're looking at about a almost, I would think thirty thousand dollars from one year to the next on this one right here.
Ah, it'd be more than that probably.
Probably.
With the number.
Or you've got, or you've got a lot of equipment that has to be.
You've got what, environmental health, about three, four vehicles?
We, yeah, probably about five. Well, some of them are mosquito control. Um, yeah, you're.
Interesting enough, if you look though, going all the way back to two thousand fifteen, there hasn't been any money flow through machinery and equipment since last, just last year, so we.
Needs a new vehicle.
Are we getting, are we going to have to replace a whole bunch of stuff here in it?
I think you're talking about transfer station. They have more equipment than environmental health. Environmental health only has vehicles.
Okay, what we're looking at, Valerie, Charlie has asked me to look at, is do like a vehicle and equipment replacement fund where we fund depreciation, where we take all your vehicles and say a five, seven-year lifespan and we just transfer that much money. So based on the number of vehicles you have, if you've got seven, it might be.
It would require the creation of another fund, a depreciation fund, where we could transfer.
You don't have a big hit in one year.
Exactly.
That's good.
A lot of them have gotten replaced with the mosquito grant we got. We replaced a lot of the trucks. So we shouldn't have made it once, and they'll be a lot of car.
The transfer typically will be more than what we actually budget to purchase one. I just kind of, off the top of my head, did the one for the sheriff's office with all of their new vehicles. I mean, and we're looking at probably a hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Exactly. That and, and Roden Bridge, if we look at their budget for tomorrow, when they come in here, he's talking about spending a half a million dollar. All in one, one year, which impacts his fund balance, but it would, it would smooth out these things.
Right.
Considerable.
That would help us in our three and a half.
I don't have any questions for for Valerie.
Yeah, how many in, we're going to go to transfer station.
What transfer station?
How many, how many full-time employees are in transfer station?
We have two truck drivers. We have three attendants, so five, five full-time.
Oh, and one cashier.
Six full-time, two part-time.
Who's your full-time cashier?
The set.
Who?
The set.
The set.
Are you, are you back to selling mulch?
We probably will not mulch again until either the end of the year or the beginning of the year.
Oh, wow.
We have to have enough to grind.
You're just not getting it in? People aren't dropping off enough raw material?
They are. It's just a smaller amount. We typically only grind once a year.
Yeah.
But we did that at the beginning of the year.
And created so many trees after the storm.
And a lot of people were coming in dump trucks for the mulch.
Yeah.
So one thing we should consider in the coming year is maybe upping the price of mulch, so they don't come getting dump trucks.
Right.
I mean, four, five dump trucks in one day.
So did you grind basically last New Year's there amounts and you've just run out now?
Yeah, we grind, I think, in February.
Wow.
Transfer station, I don't think we have any changes there either.
So what are we doing now on the cards?
We haven't decided. Once this COVID sets down.
Do something different or?
Yeah, I know that we looked at some of the numbers and it was, I don't have them in front of me, but it was quite a bit. I want to say it was like seventy-something thousand dollars that we were essentially giving away.
Well, the, the cards stem from, we, at one point in time, we did in each precinct, an annual, we had a site where people could bring their stuff. And the cards came from what our cost of doing all that was. And that, that's what determined, because we were having a lot of problems with adjoining property owners hollering about the traffic and the trash that was blowing onto their property, it, we moved it to there. It ended up being, it ended up being about two employees almost the entire year, just to handle the trash that was accumulated. Because every, we, we would have one precinct get it for a couple of weeks or something like that. But I'm concerned that the, and I hear a lot of feedback from the card deal that maybe some of the same people are getting the cards over and over again or.
There's, there's a few people that, yes, they'll, they'll take advantage of the cards. And some people sell them. They give them away.
Well, I personally, I would, I would like to propose that it, that we do away with the card system. When we set up, basically whoever rolls in, you have a free day or something at the transfer station. Because, you know, I hear a lot of people complaining that they go and that there's not any there and everything. So if we figure out how much money we're, we're spending or giving out on those, if we can't do something that's less trouble to keep up with and.
I mean, we know exactly how much has been spent last year.
I, just something to look at to me. I'm not talking about any more, you know, I'd say
I agree.
Use the same amount of money, but try to make it easier and less conflict.
I think it does help. It does help with illegal dumping, but we still have a lot of illegal dumping going on.
If you had, if you had a, a free day, you know, maybe
Good lord.
One, one time a month or one time every three months.
A free day? We need traffic cops and, and all kinds of things out there to.
Well, but we have, we have three days going on. We're just giving them out in cars and people are mishandling them. And whenever we had, whenever we had the dumpsters, we had, had to have people over there, not consistently, but quite a bit, just to make sure that they weren't putting a house in there or something.
I mean, I, I am trying to work with Keep Aransas County Beautiful. They have talked about putting dumpsters in certain areas to help clean up certain areas, and that's something that I'm more than happy to work with them and they do.
I would say, why don't you keep doing that, but I think we need to come up with a better way than giving the cards out.
I think the cards are kind of a
I don't want.
Difficulty in terms of paperwork.
If we put dumpsters in the, if we put dumpsters in the precincts, we're going to be right back.
But to keep America beautiful is paying for that.
Does the whole thing. They do the cleanup and then they, whatever they clean up, they put in the dumpster. It's not a free-for-all. It's kind of something that they manage and then.
And then they haul the dumpster off and they patrol, who puts sweat in it.
Right, rather than what we did.
Well, it'd be worth a try, but I, I think, you know, I think it'd be a great idea for you to keep working with them, but try to come up with something better than the card program.
You asked how much the cards, I've looked at, I pulled up our spreadsheet. Between seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, it's been running between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
A year. I like to say the number.
What did he say?
His chair just collapsed.
I need a new chair. Put in a commissioner's court budget.
But, I mean, you're looking at anywhere from thirty to forty-five thousand dollars that we
Yeah.
We're new that we have lost by.
Yeah, but we've, well, we haven't, we haven't lost it because we were always spending it. Yeah, it was costing a lot more than that. We were always, we were always spending it. Like I say, it just moved, it's the same thing. If you go over the cards, it'll move some.
A lot on the side of the road too, though. I mean, it's not like that's all.
Eliminated.
Right, I mean, we still have a lot of illegal dumping going on.
Well, I, I can see y'all keeping, having some mechanism to give somebody some, to get something picked up that they don't have the money, but I think the whole program, I don't think it's working.
I see, yeah. You, you do that. I know that for a fact. She's called me a few times and saying, there's a site needs to be cleaned up and they can't afford it.
Johnson.
Anyway, so, yeah, they bring it to you, you can do it for nothing. But yeah, we'll, yeah, look into that and see what we can do to help out.
So with no more cards from now or at the moment?
No.
She's.
Well, yeah, because of COVID, there's, there's such a line for cards that we just don't want to have this many people waiting.
That may be something that we don't want to start back up.
Right.
Maybe.
Okay.
All right, nothing else. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Sheriff, are you ready?
We're running a little ahead.
Really early. We're, we're running fast here.
You know, Judge, it seems to me that people come to court and ask for money and they're wearing masks. I mean.
And is he armed?
You, you probably appreciate me putting one on.
And he is armed, yeah.
For the people we encounter.
Yeah.
Uh, happy birthday, Mr. Channing.
Thank you, sir. Seventy-one.
And holding.
Yeah, holding on, but it's very slim.
Just for your information, we did start testing Saturday night. We've submitted one hundred test kits, uh, Sunday for inmates and Echo and Bravo Pod, as well as probably two-thirds of the employees, and we'll finish up the others in the next couple of days. Get them submitted. If there's anybody else in the county that needs to be tested, get them on the list and we'll work them in.
Listening to David Nega this morning, I don't think I want to be tested.
How long, how long does it take to get the results back?
This lab has told us three or four days they'll have them back. Now, the Health Department, Dr. Cuevas talked to me Friday afternoon. She's touting the same thing now that she said she can do it in three or four days. So I'm gonna submit some to her just to see whether she can produce or not.
And she hasn't produced anything in the last six months that I know of.
She hadn't yet. Everything before has been seven to fourteen days and I, I don't have that much time in the jail.
What is, what are the, you know, I hear all these different symptoms. What are the symptoms that we look for for COVID?
We're taking, we're monitoring the temperature every day of everybody in the jail.
And what is that, right?
Uh, i- if you do one hundred point four, we're gonna put you in isolation and submit you for a test just as a precaution. We had already done probably nine or ten individual, uh, inmates over the last couple of months, just because of that protocol.
What else?
Uh, the others are cold sweats, aching joints, fatigue, un, un-
That's the story of my life.
Well, shortness of breath, that's unexplained if you don't have some other issue or concern going on, or symptoms that people look for. What we did find out in the conversation Cuevas, Cuevas Friday, the Portland lab is not testing for what they're calling PCR. Uh, and that's what's causing those, any test that is not testing for that, they're given a presumptive positive too. So, but they're not recognizing it through the Health Department, so it's not showing up on reports. And this is where the discrepancy in the numbers is coming in from. And so if we're gonna run a test that's gonna be recognizable to the state and be valid as to whether somebody is whether the symptomatic or asymptomatic, but whether or not they're actively carrying the contagious, we need to do the PCR. And that's what we're doing.
And what is that?
I can't tell you exactly what they're, but, uh, part of them are looking for antigens and part of them are looking for-
Take blood or something like that.
No, it's, it's the swab, uh, but it's, it's a little bit more extensive analysis of, of the sample you're taking. Now, in both of these cases that we're using, uh, jail staff is collecting the samples. We had allegiance come in and train part of my staff to do it. Uh, Texas Guard will not even come into jails anymore and take samples because of some bad experiences they had in some of the facilities. So you've got to have somebody come do it. So, uh, Friday, a lot of discussion took place to make sure that we were doing a recognizable test and that we were trying to figure out, you know, where we could get kids and who would even do it.
How, how does the public, if they want to be tested, how do they get, who do they call? What do they do?
They'll still go through their individual physician who will write an order and send them to one of these, uh, scheduled clinics.
Get back to your budget here. Uh, I don't see anything under the Sheriff's Department standing there.
Now, just the capital, you got, you got the twenty-seventh pay period fiasco.
Yeah.
And we've also got about seventy thousand dollars worth of machinery and equipment.
On one of the deals, uh, within the Sheriff's Department, uh, three years ago, we were budgeting one-ten, one-twelve for replacement of vehicles. And we scaled that back when we replaced eighteen of them in that one year, but to guard against this massive deal, but if you're working on another plant, uh, we had set in place, this year we were gonna ask for three cars next year. We replaced one this year in the budget. That was just the last Impala that we still own. Next year, we're asking for three. The following year, we'll probably come back here and ask for four or five. Because I don't want to get to year, three years out from, or four years out from now and then ask for eighteen cars. So the three next year will probably be some low mileage vehicles, but we're gonna start a process of getting rid of some of them so they will, don't have that huge one-year impact. Uh, there's, the only way around it, I think, is to get rid of a small number of them early.
Yeah, we don't want to buy eighteen at once.
And then come back and hit you instead of with the traditional four, we'll probably ask for five.
You might have a, some vehicles for animal patrol.
Yeah, probably.
And next year's deal, we'll replace three of them. This year, the only one we're disposing of will be the Impala, and I don't know if that would be of any service to her or not. Can't put a cage in.
Say you're only asking for one this year.
One this year, yeah. Next year's budget, we're asking to replace three. Uh, ramping back up because I think it was eighty thousand dollars or ninety that we put in the line item.
Eighty grand for this year. Coming up for two thousand, that's only one vehicle?
No, that's three next year.
Okay, that's for two thousand twenty-one. Three vehicles.
So if we were gonna do, uh, what we were talking about earlier, we'd probably need to put an additional seventy, eighty thousand dollars every year for, for new vehicles.
And then when they purchase the vehicles, they would purchase them out of the vehicle and equipment replacement fund and this would just be a transfer in for depreciation.
I, I could envision where you would have a, a schedule, and not only for vehicles, but also computers, sort of things like that.
Yes, I have a-
And we've budgeted every year, we'd fund it into the general fund, through the general fund. And then when these things came due, they would come out of that fund.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm working on is the schedules and stuff now.
I think that'd be a good step forward. Right now, we're up and down and-
Well, especially with the limits on increased access.
Well, and the other thing that we've been doing for a few years is we track each vehicle independent for cost. Uh, if I've got a lemon in the group, I don't care what the mileage is. It may be time to dump it if the cost is exceeding the others. And, and we've caught one or two over the years, but I mean-
Do you have a way of tracking the operator?
To, to some extent, I mean, because a lot of, uh, we, we can look at some of that, but a lot of them get multiple operators in them off and on and uh, used both through Stone Garden and through county budget at times. But, uh, when somebody brings them back broken down all the time, yeah, we, we're keeping note of that as well.
Jackie, while I'm thinking about it, you might also give some thought to having a reserve fund for unfunded mandates.
That's in my list.
That's, that's on the bill.
It's, it's liable, it's, it will be, and I, I think more this year in the patrol and investigator group than in the jail. There, there's gonna be some spillover in jail. We've already hearing resurrection of the Sandra Bland Act, uh, just because of the current mood that's going on with Black Lives Matter. A lot of training is gonna come out about de-escalation, which we already trained, but I think there's gonna be some protocols put in place, I think, to monitor and, and for oversight, which is gonna get a lot of pushback.
So do you currently have mandates as far as people that you hire? Are you obligated to have some percentage of different racial makeup?
No, sir. No, sir.
I'm kind of surprised. Something like that didn't come up.
Well, and it would, it would vary geographically, you know, what's your makeup of your community? You may not get the applicants for some of these things. Uh, the biggest criticism, I think, or the concern that you have is gonna be in a lawsuit uh, later about disparity and discrimination and such as opposed to upfront in hiring, but, uh, you know, are you pretty well following the demographics of each community in the surrounding areas? But we keep track of all of our applicants as well as the interviews and the scoring on those to, to help buffer against that. The, the only concern really, I guess, in the law enforcement as well as the vehicle change was gonna be in, in salaries for starting out. While we have the discretionary fund for the step increases, we've fallen behind in, in the step one off the street. Uh, we lost four individuals to Portland and, and one to Engleside in the last year. Uh, we've fallen back behind because of the storm and catching up and, uh, we haven't adjusted. And that's why at the first of the year, I'd raise the concern or issue about a salary study of the county, and I know it's expensive to do that. And I don't know if other departments are experiencing the same thing, uh, but our starting salary is, is the tough part of it.
What is the starting salary?
For a patrol deputy, uh, twenty-one nineteen, I think, per hour. Uh, I'm sorry, no.
At least we haven't had, we haven't had any defund marches here yet. Everly.
Well, and, and some of that's been a misunderstanding, you know. Uh, defund on, on the surface, you're thinking, gee whiz, we're taking the money away and throwing it away or not gonna budget it, but in some of the areas where they talk about defunding is they're shifting that funds to other departments, but at the same time, they're relieving you of responsibilities that should have never been in law enforcement, such as mental health. Uh, we're not mental health doctors, uh, but it seems the state of Texas believes, gee whiz, they don't want to spend that kind of money, so we're gonna put them in the jails to take care of them. Or they're not receiving the adequate care either. Now, I'll tell you, they don't belong in jail for mental health. It's not illegal. Uh, and jails are not adequately staffed or trained to deal with it. And thus you see, uh, you know, suicide rate in jails are, they think is alarming, but I'll, I'll contend, and I think I've got the statistics, in Aransas County, I can definitely show you more suicides occur on the street than in the jail. And yet there's not the public outcry. Because they're not blaming it on law enforcement, but you put them in jail and that's the same people that you're taking out of the community. So why aren't we taking care of the mental health up front? That's a whole different. But some of the defunding, they're talking about shifting it to that, but that's a huge amount of money and they don't have that much money. Uh, I guess most of the, as far as the law enforcement budget, there's not a lot to discuss there. No, there's not too many changes that we, we stepped out and made. I wasn't sure what the interest and intent of the court was gonna be. Over the last several months, there's been a lot of money spent, like we had a lot of money, so I didn't know what y'all's take was gonna be. And I thought this morning I'll get some indication as to what I need to look at. Uh, most of the changes that we have submitted are gonna be more in my jail budget than, than in the patrol.
License and wait, what's going on there?
License and wait, uh, Chris Hill has resigned and retired, but I'm, I'm gonna ask the court to consider sending a letter to Austin. And DPS will admit that they do not have a license of wait officer assigned to Aransas County. Uh, I pulled a report and in six months, there's probably been six offenders cited by DPS in the weigh station. We can't open the weigh stations by statute now and by memorandum of understanding with DPS unless a license and a wait trooper is present. We own the stations, but we, my officer can't open them unless they send somebody over and says, okay, let's turn the lights on. And if they're not gonna staff it and maintain the safety of the roads, then they need to change the legislation or the memorandum of understandings and allow the local agencies to do so. Right now, they don't have the statistics to show that they've been here actively participating. Their argument is, gee whiz, we have higher volumes of traffic somewhere else. That doesn't mean the trucks aren't coming through Aransas County tearing up our roadways. And, you know, we have the two stations. Well, it doesn't matter how many officers I have. I can't turn them on and run the lights unless a license-
We do have a commercial officer, DPS officer living in our county.
Yes, sir, you do.
Mr. Kruger.
Yep.
I thought the captain, what's her name?
She's gone.
She's gone? Well, that, that, never mind. She said she'd look into it and get something done.
The new one that came in, uh, they assigned him the responsibility of patrol and license and wait in Corpus. And in a conversation I had, he, he, he said, well, he looks it up and he said, oh, you're right. We don't have one. That's why I'm calling. You don't have a license and wait trooper assigned to Aransas County.
I have one eleven there, but none assigned.
Mr. Kruger told me one morning that he pulled over a truck, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand pounds.
There are, like I said, there've probably been less than six offenders stopped and cited in the last six months by DPS at the weigh stations in Aransas County.
Let's fire a letter to whoever you say necessary.
Think so. If we, if we just sent a letter to Austin, had a DPS and say, listen, yeah. If, if you can't find a way to coordinate schedules and participate, uh, can we come to an understanding or change the legislation, whatever's required, so that entities can operate their own. We're still under their, their oversight, you know, as far as guidelines of, of what you write and the fee schedules and everything else, and, and I'm good with that. But to tell me we can't even open it, you know, you're putting him out there on the side of the road with scales on each individual axle, which now you're gonna get in the argument of math and accuracy and was the road level and is it even a safe place to be doing it when you've got two functional scales that are certified?
All right. Well, let's fire a letter to Director McGraw and see what happens.
Uh, I think so, and, and that's been the biggest impact there is just the inability to, to write the citations and, and, uh, turn on the, the scale. And until that's resolved or figured out, it's, it's, I, I don't, I don't know that even, it may pay the salary of the officer. I'm not sure it's doing that. I, I didn't follow the tickets through the JP's court to see what-
My understanding is that you have a little problem like, uh, people marching in Austin or whatnot, for people that pull out of the field and do that special duty, like the party.
That's, yes, sir. Uh, and even now, uh, they've, a large number of the troopers assigned here and in Retturior in Austin. Uh, I think there were two left here last week and the rest of them were in Austin.
That's the big impact, but I can recall back a week back when we were at the border, was that they pulled all of our
And all DPS.
Backing up, I, I didn't miss two things in the sheriff's office. For future concern and discussion, I think we need to, the little building we have next to the radio tower is just about maxed out. And any additional equipment or expansion that we do of the systems, we're gonna need to do something with that building, increase it or, or double it. I did have Renee, she got in touch with, uh, Haynes Construction and he submitted a recommendation and an estimate, uh, pretty shocking to me, but he, around sixty-seven thousand dollars to build a, a building of like construction and maybe twice that size, which may be overkill, but I think we need to double the current deal. Uh, but his recommendation against cutting in it and adding on was that you'd have to be cutting out those blocks on the corner. Now you're messing with, you know, the strength of it. And his recommendation was just to build a separate building close to it and run out the ice racks or trays, which is a doable deal and it's probably would control the cost better. Probably a hundred, a hundred and twenty square feet. The building that sits there now is, is less than, is ten by ten.
Hundred and twenty square feet, it costs sixty-seven thousand.
He was, he was talking about doubling that in another one. His would be ten by twenty, but that's, yes, I was shocked. I was thinking, oh, thirty, thirty-five thousand. Throw it out for court's consideration, not right now, but I think in the next couple of years, we're gonna need to be looking at it.
Would that be putting any kind of machinery in or just the building?
Just the equipment and electrical.
He can do the electrical for that?
I think he was including some outlets in it or a panel.
Well, yeah, probably some basic, but, but that brings in, what does that bring in? Two hundred amps, three hundred amps?
Uh, that I can do. He was, got with Colin on a lot of that. Uh, that and, and the other deal on radio equipment, I did ask for an increase from the normal traditional three thousand to forty thousand. The emergency corps of Aransas County did get a grant. They're gonna build a tower at one-eighty-eight and thirty-five south. And they're working on their plans now with, uh, engineers and architects, I think. But Motorola gave me an estimate of about forty grand to set up the microwave to send that signal south of that tower to where we could put an antenna on it as well. That would create a backbone for the emergency communications in the county from Holiday Beach all the way to one-eighty-eight with three towers tied together.
What is the one that's up at Sixteenth or Eighteenth Street on the bypass? I, I saw something that Willard-
Oh, Tech dot, Tech dot is building a three-hundred-foot tower for their regional signaling in, in the middle of the bypass. Yep.
So what they're putting in the middle of the bypass?
Yes, ma'am. They poured, poured the piling for that last week.
Did, did John mention to you about the, the Aransas Pass Water Tower?
I've heard-
That thing is, I, I think it's, I forgot how tall it is. It's, it's pretty tall. And to my knowledge, uh, they're, they're gonna have room up there if you want to put a, you know, smaller station up there to get that, you know, get the, the, uh, the, the water coverage and, and precinct one A.
Well, the, the Corps of Engineers, the, the fire departments is, they've, they have received their funding, haven't they? Uh, they're, they're putting a tower up at one-eighty-eight in the bypass already. Uh, and, and that's who we'd been talking with and working with.
How tall is that one?
Two hundred foot.
Now, see, I think this water tower, I think the water tower is about there and fifty foot tall to the top. Anyway, anyway, it's just a thought.
We got money from GLO, so it's-
Yeah, it's just a thought, you know.
Yes, sir. Week, week four last night, we called and spoke to the lady in Washington who was, uh, had some revision questions with Jackie. She took care of those. She told me she was forwarding the report to her supervisor and it would be released probably within a week. Friday, we got a call from Carlos Alvarado, who is the marshal in charge out of San Antonio. Friday, we got a call from Carlos Alvarado, who was the marshal in charge out of San Antone for the region. He was a little perplexed and disappointed, started in Omando about the fact that, gee whiz, we cost more than any other agency in the area, and we can't test people. And so did he need to come get his inmates and take them somewhere where they could be tested? Whoa, 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 we ordered the kids, we're starting tomorrow. I called him back after Mondo's conversation and wanted to clarify that he, I felt like he had us confused with somebody else because he said, we're getting $88. And I said, we're not getting $88. Well, what he had was a request, he has to write a letter of justification. And that was, he was using that figure, and he said, I was going to have a hard time justifying the figure if y'all couldn't even test. And he said, y'all have been a good facility. And he said, never had any problems. But he said, at that fee, he said, you're going to, we're going to be going to the top of his list as far as cost, I guess. I told him that fee was a recommendation based on our cost and that it is, you know, it's a negotiable deal. I don't want to price us out of the business. But he was, he seemed to be content and happy to find out that we were setting up to do the COVID testing. And so we're able to provide anything any of his other facilities are doing. So he felt like that letter would be written this week and turned in. So hopefully by the end of the week, we're going to hear some, some discussion about us sitting down with him and talking about a fee. Yes, sir.
We've been doing this for.
I told him it's been going on over a year and a half.
Say, at least a year.
I don't, I don't think they're going to dictate anything for us, but, because my concern is I don't want 20 inmates at $90 a day if I can get 80 inmates at, you know, 75 or whatever, you know. And I think we've got to try to figure out where that breaking point's at. And I don't know that we can get them to commit to some minimum, but you know, that needs to be, they need to understand that's the position we're in. We're running, yeah, it's, and 63, I think, was the other day. No, I don't. Robstown is going to hold probably more than anybody else. I don't know what Robstown charges, but I can tell you that I know at least three times in the 12 years I've been here, we have bailed them out because of problems in Robstown. We reconfigured our floor count and moved, we gave, we gave up some males to take on females. And it's always been an issue of females in Robstown. Now, how you continue to operate with somebody that creates legal problems for you, I think, in Robstown or whatever's going on, is beyond me, but it must be a pretty cheap rate. But three times in 12 years, we've accommodated them and whatever. No, sir. But it's, it's always involved, they dump the females in Robstown. They take them all out for, use your imagination, like, you know, let it run wild. But three times in 12 years, they have had to take the females out of the Robstown facility. And they're looking for places to put them. And we, we swapped off prisoners last time, rearranged our floor plan. One of our pods allows us to do that because it's divided half and half where we can pick up more than the 52 or 53, spill over into half of another pod if we need to, of males or females, and do what we can to work with them. True, because we're doing 64 now, I think, or have been for. And so if we can get.
Quite a while, I think.
Six years. Was the last time we, we negotiated change, six or seven years ago.
I think, believe in 12.
What percentage of ours are, are our prisoners now, what?
Half.
Half of them?
We, but we, right now, because of COVID, we've kept that number low for that reason, to lower the exposure. It's, we've got the beds, the problem is trying to get them through the quarantine intake process that we've established to guarantee that we're not bringing somebody in that just contaminates the whole population. And it's been aggravating to some agencies not understanding that it's, it's not that I don't have the beds in the general population. It's that right now in Aransas County, if you come to the facility, you're going to sit in a holding cell for 24 hours with your temperature monitored every six hours. We're going to take your temperature. And if no problems or symptoms occur there, we'll move you to an isolation cell for several more days and take your temperature every day. You don't get to general population floor in Aransas County for about six or seven days. And the inmates that are inside don't want to see new inmates for that fear. And, and I don't need it in the facility because you get in there and then we're going to have a whole different problem. Well, part of this, they're, the grant is covering a lot of what, the modification of the air conditioning, the negative pressure cells that we're creating. It's being covered, but it's just an inconvenience. Colin is going to install, we're asking for a second Zoom conference deal. We have conflicts that have occurred. While we've got the bandwidth, we didn't have the cameras set up because the federal courts, we're doing federal courts, both in Corpus and in Victoria. You throw in the district courts here and county court as well, we've had scheduling problems. You know, delivering them to the individual courtrooms wasn't the problem that we have today because now we're shoving them all in one courtroom with the Zoom. And so scheduling is a little bit of a conflict, and we're trying to set up a second or third Zoom capability in the facility for that reason. I didn't submit, I don't think we asked for.
No, sir, you didn't have very many. It didn't have very many changes from the jail.
The only thing that changed, you know, the insurance premium, but that had to do with the storm and North Star stuff. Jail salaries, surprisingly, haven't created the same dilemma that I have. We, we're holding, holding ground with surrounding facilities and doing well there. The only thing really in the jail was whether or not we can get a renegotiated contract completed. I believe we will. I just today can't tell you whether we're going to, I'm not even sure what number was projected on there. It's 80. He threw out 88. I didn't think it was that high. I was thinking 83 or 85. And, I mean, if, if we could come to an understanding with him that, gee whiz, Carlos, our issue is, as we back off of that, I need some kind of an assurance or expectation that you're going to maintain some kind of a minimum population with us to where that we could have some consistency in our budget numbers as well.
Well, if you're talking about an 18, $16, $18 a day difference. And you're looking at 16, $17, $18 a day. That's 30 days. 50,000, which means half a million, 600,000 a year. And we could certainly use that.
Okay, if nothing else, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep healthy. Keep everybody healthy in your department.
Second.
In a second.